Here we go again. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our January thirteenth council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson, our clerk, for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Loosely.
Present.
We have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odoa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna beg. The town of Petrollia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number twenty-nine of eighteen twenty-seven. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully within the land and with the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to ask council if there's any declaration or preliminary interest, and to do it now or at the appropriate time.
I have one regarding finance. It has already been filed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field.
And, your worship, I did have one received and filed by Counselor Patel in relation to item twelve of the following opportunities to address council.
Okay, thank you. So noted. That'll move us on to item number six, to adopt the agenda before you tonight. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Any discussion regarding the agenda before you? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us to the minutes of an open meeting on December the ninth, a regular council meeting. For approval, I'll ask for a first and second to put that on. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Patel. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to adopt its circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? Errors or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll also take us to the minutes of a public meeting on December the tenth regarding the keeping of backyard chickens. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file as information notes of the December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four public information session held regarding the keeping of backyard chickens.
Any discussion regarding those minutes? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the moment of reflection. I'll ask everyone to please stand. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll take us to item number nine, which is council roundtable announcements. And tonight, we start at the beginning. As you know, we rotate this. And first on my list is Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, your worship. Really just the closing ceremonies for the one fifty, which I'm sure you're going to touch on. It's been said many times, but again, great job to the committee and staff for the year that they managed to pull off.
Thank you. And I will speak to that as well, but yes, that was great. Counselor Hyatt.
I have nothing to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patel.
Nothing additional to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
Yeah, excuse me. I attended the New Year's Eve party for one fifty, and it was very successful. I was at closing ceremonies, which was successful too, although it wasn't as long. And I guess that's about all I had to share.
That was great. And I want to thank you and your wife for donating the hot dogs and the drinks that night, Counselor O'Hara. So thank you for that. Counselor Welsh.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And that will take us to Deputy Mayor Field.
I have nothing at this time.
Well, I do have a couple of things.
I figured.
For council's information, I attended the Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce After Five event at the Sarnia Golf and Curly Club on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. I was recognized as the mayor of the town of Petrollia, and it was a good time had by all. I met with Mayor Mike Bradley and staff on Tuesday, December seventeenth, for a short discussion and update on issues in both communities, and it was also a very successful, good meeting. I attended the police meeting held on Wednesday, December the eighteenth, from my last meeting, and introduced Deputy Mayor Joel Field, who will be taking my place for the two thousand and twenty-five year. I attended the official opening of the fifty-sixth Annual Earl Travail Memorial Regional U-18 Silver Stick Tournament in Petrollia on Friday, December the twenty-seventh. And on behalf of Petrollia Council and staff, I welcomed everyone to our fine town and celebrating our hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary this year. I also congratulated the Silver Stick Committee, minor hockey, minor hockey moms, referees, all the volunteers and sponsors in making this tournament possible. I wished all the teams good luck and to have a good tournament. And speaking of that, congratulations to the Petrollia Oilers, U-18 B coaches, and all those involved that again won the Silver Stick Tournament at the Greenwood Recreation Center. And then found out this weekend, they also won the International Silver Stick Championship in Forest. So all the best to the Petrollia Oilers. Congratulations to our two thousand and twenty-four Chili Cook Off winners from Christmas in the Park. The Silver Fork Award, which is second place, went to the Petrollia and Area Kiwanis Club. The coveted Chili Pot Trophy, or first place, went to the Rotary Club of Petrollia. Special thanks to the Petrollia staff in arranging this event at the Greenwood Recreation Center on Tuesday, December thirty-first. And I want to just mention Deputy Mayor Joel Field and Counselor Clark were also present for the pitcher. And also, I want to thank the Chairman of Parks and Recreation, who was also present for that meeting as well. Special thanks to the municipal staff, one fifty committee, service clubs, volunteers, sponsors, and Lang's bus lines on a very successful one fifty closing party. And as mentioned before, the hot dogs and drinks were donated by Ross and Kathy O'Hara. The fireworks were also a great success with a good turnout. It was a great event. Congratulations to Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, M.C., for the one fifty committee, municipal staff, volunteers, invited dignitaries that took part in the Petrollia one fifty anniversary on January the first, two thousand and twenty-five. It was a great success enjoyed by all. Thank you for that, Mrs. Ellsworth. I also attended the New Year's Day Levy at the Royal Canadian Legion and Ladies Auxiliary Petrollia Branch, two sixteen, on January the first. I brought greetings on behalf of council and staff and wished everyone a happy new year. Counselor Patel and Deputy Mayor Field were also in attendance. And that's all I have. That'll move us on now to item number ten, which is update to the appointed councillors on the different committees. And first, we start with the Petrollia Heritage Advisory Committee. And on that committee, we have Counselor Welsh and Counselor O'Hara. Which one of the two of you would like to give us an update? Counselor Welsh?
Ross is just new back to us.
Okay, go ahead.
Twenty-six, or twenty-five, sorry. Just a verbal update this time. October and November, we're basically spending with our planning our budget for this year and planning our activities and events for twenty twenty-five, the first of which will be February the fifteenth for our Family Day Heritage Open House here.
Thank you, Counselor Welsh. We also have a motion to adopt your verbal report. Would you move that, Counselor Welsh? I'll need a seconder. Counselor O'Hara, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive as presented the Petrollia Heritage Advisory Committee update.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that update? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us next to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Our council representatives are Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt. It's one of the two gentlemen who'd like to take the lead.
Doesn't matter.
There we go.
Okay. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
We haven't had a meeting too recently, so maybe we can defer any report outs until we have some minutes available from me.
That's why you're just giving an update. Would you, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, we haven't met since November because of the Chili Cook Off, Christmas in the Park, the Sandcloth Parade. We were kind of busy in December, so we'll have a meeting next month early, and then we'll have a report for next month.
Okay, thank you. And yes, you were very busy. Would you gentlemen like to move and second that motion before you? Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive as presented the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee update.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving that update? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us now to the Petrollia Youth Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Patel and Counselor Hyatt on that committee. Which one of the two of you would like to take a lead on that update? And it's just a verbal. Counselor Patel?
Yes, we haven't had a formal meeting since before the holidays. We have deferred our first meeting of two thousand and twenty-five till February, and I will have some updates. We have some things in the works that I can report to as soon as that meeting has been held.
Thank you, Counselor Patel. Counselor Hyatt, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Can I ask if you would move and second that motion for us? So it's moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that update, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive as presented the Petrollia Youth Advisory Committee update.
Any questions from council? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to the Municipal Services and Traffic, we have...
And, your worship, I made an error. It's actually Deputy Mayor Field, not Counselor Hyatt. Apologies.
Not a problem. Okay, for Municipal Service and Traffic, we have the two members to just give us an update. Which one of the two of you would like to take the lead on?
They know.
Okay, just, okay.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
So now that the budget's passed, staff have started working with town engineers to prepare some estimates and proposals for the upcoming capital projects. The compost and wood chipping dates will come to a report in February. We, they had a water main break during Christmas and want to thank the Public Works staff and Aqua for getting it repaired in a timely manner. And I just like to acknowledge Mr. Thompson. He fields the garbage can questions every day and makes those calls. I think people, I think are generally getting used to it. It was change. And I think change is hard for some people, but we're getting a lot of positive comments moving forward. So we're just working through that. And I just want to congratulate, Public Works do a great job in getting our snow removed and getting salting. It's nice when you're in the town of Petroy and you leave, you go to Sarnia, and it's a totally different story. So now I just want to congratulate those guys on doing a great job, so that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And I too, as far as the garbage, I'm just asking for the people to be patient and give it a little time so we can continue on. Would you like to move that motion, Deputy Mayor Field? I'll need a seconder for that, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on municipal services happenings.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that update? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the planning and development, and we have Deputy Mayor Joel Field. Go ahead.
And there hasn't been, through the holidays, there hasn't been a lot. I plan on working with Mr. Benjamin's, and we're going to sit together and have a regular report that's going to come for planning and development moving forward. And the next council meeting that we have it on there, we'll have an update and a report, but things are moving along.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field, and I'm really pleased with that. I'm also really pleased to see development like we had the public meeting tonight, things moving forward, so I'm pleased with that. Would you like to move that motion, that update? Moved by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll need a seconder, please. Seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on planning and development happenings.
Any questions from council? That'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that update? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us now to the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority. And we, our councillor rep is Counselor O'Hara.
Yeah, I have nothing to really to report.
All right. Would you like to make that motion to just? All right, moved by Counselor O'Hara. I'll need a seconder for that, please. Seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion from council? Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
Just that I asked for some clarification from Counselor O'Hara and our clerk with respect to our agreement for Bridgeview Park. When reading their asset management plan, I was just wondering who owns what. I thought we owned the pavilions down there, but it kind of looks like from their asset management plan that maybe they own them. So I am getting clarification on that.
Counselor O'Hara, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I thought that, I think that the St. Clair Conservation Authority owns them. And we've got to get it clarified for sure.
Yeah, do that, because we have on several occasions paid to reshingle that building. So I thought maybe we did, but okay, that's fine. Are you okay with that, Counselor Welsh? Okay, all right.
I do have a mover and seconder.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll call the vote. And all those in favor of approving that update? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us now to correspondence for information. That's item number eleven. We have items number A to F, unless council wishes to withdraw one separately to deal with. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. And is that to approve A to F? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file correspondence items eleven A through F.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to item number twelve. We receive correspondence.
And, your worship, we do have that declared conflict of interest from Counselor Patel on this item.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. So I see that Counselor Patel has moved herself from the seat and declared a conflict of interest. We have correspondence from Ms. Ava Horwood in regards to funding for the No One Stands Alone, and it's a letter of request. This is a situation where we do have a deadline for grants to come in, which I believe is September, and correct me if I'm, oh, August?
Preferred by August, but has to be in by September, yes, that's correct.
The concern I have for this, for council to be aware of, is normally if you miss that date, you'd normally have to wait till the next year to apply for it. I'm only concerned if we set precedent on allowing this to happen, others were going to come back and say, I didn't get in on time. So I'll ask for council's direction on what you'd like to do with that. And I'll need a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor, whatever council would like to recommend. Moved by Counselor Hyatt.
I'll make the motion that we provide the twenty-five hundred dollars as requested.
Okay, I'll need a seconder for that. No seconder, that will be lost. Mrs. Pearson, so then I'll ask for a motion giving me direction maybe to request that they apply for the year two thousand and twenty-six. Is that acceptable? Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to kind of put something together there, please.
Here with me just one second here. Okay, how would we go with that? The council of town of Petrollia directs staff to respond to the request from No One Stands Alone for funding in the two thousand, for funding in two thousand and twenty-five to advise of the municipal grant program process and that they are welcome to apply for funding through this process to be considered by council in the two thousand and twenty-six budget.
Any, oh, Deputy Mayor Field.
And I'd just like to say, I think this organization is an amazing organization that does great work, and we wouldn't be, we have been donating every year to it. I was surprised to not see it at budget time. And I know that there was some funding through the Petroy Community Fund. You know, I just, I'm again nervous of precedent. I know that we have turned down organizations that have come after the fact for it. I just, it's good to have it right at budget time, but I don't want this to reflect on the organization at all. The only reason is because of the setting of precedent for me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field, and I agree. Oh, sorry.
Through, Deputy Mayor Field, would you like that included in the motion?
Yeah, this doesn't reflect the organization. I...
And I agree too. It is a good organization, a great cause.
It's the precedent where we've done this, and I think we've stood strong on a lot of different policies that we have.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Mrs. Pearson.
I actually just made myself to update that too. In order to not set precedence was due to that.
All right. Any other additions or any comments from council? If not, I'll call the vote.
A seconder, your worship.
Oh, okay. We have a mover. Do I have a second of my Counselor Welsh? All right, I'll ask again. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Next is we have from delegations and presentation from Mr. Floyd Vanderwall of Spectra Construction. And I don't know if, I don't see him here. Now, council did get a copy of his request. I would just like to, and I know he's not here to speak to it, but I put something together that I would like council to consider. And I'd like to recommend to council something like this, that staff be directed to include wording at the time of a subdivision agreement that speaks to the allowance of a ten-foot perimeter that complies with the long grass regulation at the town as the area is being developed. This would only be in place for properties that have an executed subdivision agreement. Now, I know that's pretty heavy. I can have it read again if you like. But I think it's, I saw his letter. I tend to agree. It does make it awkward for our developers. And, but I will ask maybe the clerk just to read that again.
Certainly. To recommend to council that staff be directed to include wording at the time of a subdivision agreement that speaks to the allowance of a ten-foot perimeter that complies with long grass regulation of the town as the area is developed. This would only be in place for properties that have an executed subdivision agreement.
Deputy Mayor Field.
First, your worship, I think we got to get a mover to put something on the table.
Sure, okay. I need a mover and a seconder to put that. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field, and I'll ask Deputy Mayor Field to speak. Go ahead.
Could explain the, so we have a lot, we have a ten meters or ten-foot perimeter around the edge that have to be maintained?
Correct.
On the whole lot? Or just on the front, frontage?
I think it'd be all the abutting property, because most of the property would be part of their subdivision anyway.
So if there's an...
It's a good question, though.
If we're going all the way around a property that backs into another lot, are we cutting the back of properties?
No. I think the idea that's a ten-foot perimeter would be all the way around. Okay, Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
Ten-foot perimeter around the entire development?
Yes.
Not each property individually?
No, just, that's my understanding. His property. So he'd have to go all the way around. And again, I'm open for suggestions if council doesn't agree with this. Counselor Clark, could you just comment?
I just, I don't, I don't know if this is factual, but in Mr. Vanderwall's letter here, he does indicate the city of Sarnia bylaw has a setback from adjoining properties for six feet, which would be all the way around.
Right.
Now, whether that is per lot or per development, it doesn't clarify.
I'm thinking it would be the perimeter. But again, this is just a, I'm just giving this for council's consideration. I can live with six feet. I think at one time, we had a fifty-foot setback years ago. That was very awkward, I think, for, for...
On a forty-foot lot, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, it was a fifty-foot setback. But anyway, I can, I can live with one or the other, ten or six. Counselor Hyatt.
I think for me, if it's the perimeter of the subdivision, you might get a few houses that are built, and then you're going to have an empty lot beside it, and it could maybe have ten-foot weeds on the lot that's beside it. So maybe it has to be related to whether or not the property has been developed already and the abutting property has not been developed.
So would we say per lot then?
I think per lot might be too much, because you could have two undeveloped lots side by side. So then you're creating a line down the middle. So maybe we need staff to come back with some options as opposed to, all right, this motion. Maybe it's just some options for us to consider.
Why don't we consider referring this to staff or report back to council?
So, your worship, we do have that motion on the table right now, and then we can bring back a report for staff.
All right. But I could, is a mover and a seconder agreeing to withdraw that?
Yes, okay.
All right, so then I'll ask for a motion to refer this to staff or report back to council. Moved by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us now on to community announcements, recognitions, and awards. I'll ask council for a mover and a seconder regarding that motion before you. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive as information only the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five community announcements as presented.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, welcome back. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. This'll bring us now to the first opportunity for the public to address council. I do want to just remind council that there is a time limit of ten minutes. And according to the council's rules governing proceedings, residents can only address council on the same subject every three months. So some of the individuals that may be addressed the council regarding the chickens will not be able to speak tonight again. But I'll open it up for anyone wishing to address council at this time. State your name and address, please.
Right. I live at forty forty Mulberry Place.
Okay, thank you.
I grew up on a hobby farm just outside of town, and I have a lifetime of experience caring for animals of all kinds, like including but not limited to chickens. The overwhelming support of backyard chickens has been awesome to see, with sixty-two percent of residents in favor. The food prices are rising. Self-sufficiency is becoming an important aspect of life for many local families. I think that a lot of the questions and concerns that were brought forth during the survey and research phase are already well on their way to being answered to the satisfaction of those who are unsure at first. Lampton Public Health is on board and willing to provide education. The town of Petrollia would not be subject to any liability. There are plenty of Facebook groups and ready and willing to help and answer any questions about housing and husbandry. And there are, in fact, veterinarians within a reasonable distance who could care for the chickens when it becomes necessary. There will also be financial gain for the town with a permit program. A number of people who voted in favor for allowing chickens don't necessarily want chickens for themselves at this time, but don't care that their neighbors do. I think that's very respectable. Education is key. Right now, it seems like a lot of work to implement, but once everything is in place, it will be such a great step in the right direction for Petrollia and its growing families, in my opinion, and the opinion of so many citizens. Once the rules and regulations are set up and all residents are on the same page about expectations, I think that will ease the minds of most people who are concerned about things like the chicken's living conditions, smell, et cetera. I myself have three bantam chickens at this time. My feed is stored in Rubbermaid garbage bins with lids on them. Don't have any signs of mice or other rodents in my home or shed. And the only time there's any odor associated with the coop is on clean-out days, which obviously disperses quickly. I was happy to invite Bylaw Officer Jessica Vandenberg to my backyard, and she herself saw my setup. I think if all setups are subject to inspection and feedback, there should be no issues at all. We thank our council so much for hearing our opinions and taking into consideration what the people want and for gathering information thoroughly so that we can make an informed decision. We look forward to the decision and the opportunity to provide for our families.
Okay, thank you. Before you go, any questions from council? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
I, just a quick question, and maybe you said it and I missed it. What do you do with your compost?
So my waste, fortunately, my parents do still have a hobby farm. So my waste goes into Rubbermaid totes and compost in their manure pile.
So you relocate it to where? So you relocate it to where?
To my parents' farm, hobby farm.
Okay, where is that?
Um, just outside on the south line.
Okay.
And then it gets spread on the fields.
And if I, your worship, can just get a copy for a presentation?
Yeah, if you have a, could we receive a copy of your presentation for the clerk for the minutes?
Sure.
If you, if you could leave a copy or send it to.
Oh, I don't have a paper, but I can send it.
So I thought it was a paper copy house. Yeah.
All right. Thank you for coming to address council. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Okay, please state your name and address.
Joel Hackett, 4003 Petrolia Line. I was raised on a chicken farm with 10,000 chickens, but that's not my concern. I'm here with the garbage can ordeal. I'm advocating for my neighbor, Carl Lapri. He lives at 413 Uzloski Street. He's a 99-year-old war veteran. Cares for and maintains his property almost as nice as mine. So I'm just advocating Carl was dropped. He made some phone calls. Well, I should put in there, he's legally blind too. So 99-year-old war veteran. He made some calls. He was reissued his garbage cans, only to be revoked. So like I say, I'm not, I'm just here as an advocate, not even sure if it's proper or whatever. You haven't kicked me out yet. So I'm just wondering if this issue could be resolved one way or another, even if it was for the short term. He, um, his property, he pays Petrolia taxes, like town of Petrolia taxes and in its going townships with his lot line, as do three other residents along that west line of Uzloski Street. So I'm just a concerned citizen. We help him out with his yard work. 99 years old, he doesn't have anything to worry about, snow on his driveway, leaves in his eve trough and putting his garbage out. Those are like, as you get older, those are the three things you're worried about. And this is one of his concerns. So that's my place.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead and address it through me, please.
Yeah, through you. There is a notice of motion that councillor Welsh is bringing forward that I believe addresses the residents on Uzloski. And I've spoke to a few of them as well. So I think that notice of motion will, will address. And that'll come to our next council meeting.
Not going to mention any names?
Almost as nice of your yard. I can't believe you said that.
Any other questions from council? If not, thank you for coming to address this council. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to our financial accounts report. I'll ask for a mover and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the November 23rd, 2024 through December 30th, 2024, general financial.
Any questions from council? Councillor Clark, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'll call the vote. All those in favor for approving those accounts, opposed? That carries. We also have a list of the accounts. We have a pecuniary interest for deputy mayor field. And I'll ask for a mover and a second to put that on the floor. And for the record, please note that deputy mayor field has left his chair. Moved by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the November 23rd, 2024 through December 30th, 2024, Lampton sanitation accounts.
Any discussions from council? Councillor Clark, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those accounts, opposed? That motion carries. And please note, Deputy Mayor Field is returning to the chair. The next item 17 is in regards to the backyard chicken and the information. I do want to thank staff and Mrs. Pearson for that detailed report. Council, there is a motion before you, but you have an option on one or two. I'll ask council to give me direction on which one you wish to deal with at this time. I need a mover and a second to put it on the, moved by councillor Welsh. For, what is your proposed motion?
I'd like to propose a third option.
That's not listed. There's no option. It's one or, oh, option one or two. Okay. Okay, which, which council's right? Councillor Hyatt?
Can I have a question?
Sure.
If with, with option number two, the information will come back to council again for final authorization on whatever licensing bylaw comes, whatever other bylaws, animal-related bylaws, zoning bylaws, all that information will come back to council again for decision.
Uh, my understanding, yeah. That would have to come back for more information. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Pearson. That there'd be a lot of items that have to be sorted out if you take that option.
Yeah. So through your worship, exactly that, that if council wishes to implement a permit, it would take six to eight months for that, because we still have to go through a zoning amendment. There's, there's items that would still take place. But yes, everything would, that would put the wheels in motion for those amendments and programs to be put in place, including the fee structure, the fine structure, all those items that come along with implementing a new program.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Councillor O'Hara?
We don't, we don't have a motion on the floor right now.
Well, there's, no, I'll move option one. Okay, option one. I'll need a second for that, please. Seconded by councillor Clark. All right, I'm going to ask the clerk to read that motion, including that option one, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive the report of the Director of Legislative Services, Clerk and Deputy Operations dated January 13th, 2025, regarding the keeping of backyard chickens and that staff be directed to maintain status quo with respect to keeping of livestock in residential zones, including the keeping of backyard chickens.
All right. Everyone clear? Any discussion? I'll ask the vote. Oh, sorry. Sorry, councillor Patel, did you go, did you want to speak?
Yes, please, through you, your worship. So option one and two look very clear, but in all the discussion and all the information, and of course, the report from the public and the overwhelming response, I'm wondering also, like councillor Welsh, is there a third option that while option two may take six to eight months, that we could take this same opportunity to try a trial basis to maintain it and kind of look at, look at option one as a temporary?
Yeah, except we do have a motion on the floor for option one. So we're discussing that.
And status quo meaning through your worship that there's no changes to the current situation?
That's correct. That means that it's remain agricultural. That's right. Any other discussion from council? I'll call the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
I just think from my perspective, option one is a challenge because we've had so many people that said backyard chickens is, is a good idea, whether they want chickens or not. You know, 600 people said that chicken seems like not a bad idea, although 600 people said they didn't, might not want to have chickens. So I guess that was the whole reason for getting the public input, right?
It was. However, we haven't, we haven't enforced that portion of the bylaw. And I know it's been in place for years. Councillor Clark?
Just two comments. The status quo would be basing it on a complaint basis, right? The, the bylaw response would be on a complaint basis.
That's correct.
And second of all, 683 or whatever the number is out of 6,000 is pretty limited response, I think. I don't think that's overwhelming.
Your worship.
Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
If I could just ask a question with the survey. I know the first question is, do you live in Petrolia? But is there any, maybe through you to Mrs. Ellsworth, is there any way to prove everybody's from Petrolia? I'm not accusing anybody of lying, but the first question is yes or no. Like, are you from Petrolia?
Through you, your worship.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ellsworth, yeah.
Through you to Deputy Mayor Field, no. I mean, if we wanted to go and run IP addresses, that would be the only way. There's also no way for us to prove that a family of five didn't use five devices to vote.
And, you know, I have no problem with a family of five, that's five people that.
Yeah, those two things are a little bit tough for us to prevent. So that being said, if someone did truthfully say that, no, they were not a resident, it did kick them out of the survey and prevent them from recording a response.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion being option number one. That's what that motion carries. Okay, thank you. I think to add to that, then if we're sticking to option number one, we haven't had the county enforce that. I think we should have, council should consider giving them so many days or 30 days if there's a complaint to remove the chickens. But I'll.
Through you, your worship, I can, I can speak to that. Should there be any complaints received at the county? They do work with, with any removals on any bylaw, not just in relation to this specifically. They always work with, with the residents to maintain a timeline for, for compliance.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I think my concern was just to give him some kind of leeway. Councillor Patel?
Thank you, through your worship. So with the two options in front of us to vote on, which neither were 100%.
Yeah, we've already voted on, on option one.
So can we not bring anything to the table that would allow a timeframe to?
We can. I think what Mrs. Pearson was saying is the county already worked with whoever the complaint is to give them reasonable time. But if you want, if council wants to do a motion and put it in, on the form of a motion, I'm okay with that. Councillor Welsh?
I just have a question actually about the agenda. So when the agenda was first published, there was a third option on it for a pilot program. And when it was edited for, on the 10th, that option was removed. And I'm just wondering why that option was removed.
I think that was just a discussion with staff and we did the agenda. That's why that's, it was, it was felt if you get into option, you're basically approving it down the road. So we needed an option. We needed to say yes or no. That's what I believe the thinking was.
There, there are many pilot programs that have been approved and not approved in, throughout the province.
Could be. I'm not aware of that in detail. But, all right. There's nothing else? Let's, let's move on. We'll go to the item number, it's fire emergency management. We have a report from Chief Cousins, Director of Public Safety, Fire Chief regarding the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation on the Canadian grant for the firehouse. I'd like to ask for a mover and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the fire chief, director of public safety dated this 13th day of January 2025, regarding the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation of Canada grant.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I also want to note, thank the chief and Jayla Saunders for putting this application together. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was for $13,356.60. I'll ask, does council have any questions regarding that? Fire Chief Cousins, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Our house subs for their grant, that's great. We're going to be buying 30 sets of bell clavas, 30 pairs of gloves, and 30 pairs of fire. Doesn't sound like much, but it is $13,000.
Oh, that's great news. That's good news. Thank you. All right. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the fire chief, director of public safety dated this 13th day of January 2025, regarding the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation of Canada grant.
All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll move us on to water wastewater. We have a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations regarding consolidated linear infrastructure. There's a motion before you. I'll ask for a mover and a second to put that on for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to approve the report of the Director of Operations dated January 13th, 2025, regarding consolidated linear infrastructure implementation as required under the province, and that Meisner Engineering be approved to complete the consolidated linear infrastructure inspection, reporting an inventory support study at a cost of $29,971 plus HS.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council? Councillor Hyatt?
Just a question for me. Thank you through you, maybe to Mr. Thompson. Is, is there any costs for Jacobs or OCWA related to this project, or is it only for the engineering?
Just for the engineering from Meisner.
Correct.
Okay. Councillor Welsh?
Meisner was formerly May.
Actually, through your worship, to councillor Welsh, Lydia's gone off on her own. She started her own engineering firm. So myself, Mr. Sarabaw, sat down with Lydia and MIG, and she has taken that file with her. She had the background with it. So it's, everything's, everything's good. But yeah, Lydia's on her own now.
Is it, you okay with that, councillor Welsh?
Also pleasantly surprised at the cost.
Yeah.
Not nearly as much as I thought it was going to be.
Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the, oh, sorry. I'll call the vote. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. They can read my mind. To the second opportunity for the public to address council. Is there anyone wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to the unfinished and new business. We have a notice of motion from councillor Chad Hyatt. We have also a one from councillor Liz Welsh. That will be dealt with at the next meeting. Unless council wishes to deal with them tonight, we can, but you'll need two-thirds of council, which I believe is five or seven, to deal with it tonight. So if you're okay with just dealing with it at the next meeting, we'll go ahead. All right. That'll take us now to the consideration of the bylaws. I'll ask for a mover and a second to approve the first and second reading of the bylaws. Moved by deputy mayor field, seconded by councillor Hyatt. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And that'll take us to a motion to approve the bylaws a third time, finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered. I'll need a mover and a second to have those bylaws approved. Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Patel. Any questions from council? I'll ask the clerk to read those bylaws, please.
And that is for bylaw number 01 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to authorize the borrowing of $5 million, be read a third time and finally passed. That bylaw number 02, I'm sorry, 02 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to levy and collect a portion of the property taxes for the year 2025, be read a third time and finally passed. I'm sorry, that's actually bylaw number 03 of 2025. Bylaw number 02 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to authorize yearly penalty, be read a third time and finally passed. Bylaw number four of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to confirm the commitment of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to protect the health and safety of its workers, be read a third time and finally passed. And finally, that bylaw number 05 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including January 13th, 2025, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council regarding those bylaws? Normally, there's, there's bylaws, we do those every year at this time. And I just want to clarify the amount of borrowing that we talked about. That's only if necessary. It doesn't mean we're going out borrowing that money. Mr. Shalabod, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just a quick point, your worship. Like the borrowing of up to $5 million. I've been here, I think, 11 years or so. We've never had to do it. It's just in case something big happens and we haven't got our tax revenue in yet for the year.
And I also, I think the penalty charge, that's, does that remain the same as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Which is one and a quarter percent. All right. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Shalabod. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those bylaws? Opposed? That motion carries. I'll need a motion for adjournment, please. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor field. And that is to our next regular council meeting.
February 10th, your worship.
February the 10th. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming and have a good evening. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and have a good evening.